Hello everyone, my name is Mike Burns. I'm the Operations NCO here in High Level detachment. Of course, we're responsible for Mackenzie County and a few of the First Nations community here in the area. I'm here tonight for an open mic session. I'll try and answer any questions that you may send our way. Just to give you a bit of history on the detachment here, there's 12 constables here in High Level, and they cover Mackenzie County as well, parts of Mackenzie County. We go as far north of the border as the NWT. We go as far west as the halfway to Chautauqua there, to the river. And as far east, about halfway to Fort Vermillion there. I'm not sure which range road it is, but we're right in the middle there. And going south, we go all the way to, on the east side of the highway, we go to Carcage Yes, thank you. And Cad River on the west side of the road. As I said earlier, we have 12 constables, there are four supervisors here, there's one sergeant, that's myself, I have three corporals, that's Danny Mills, Sam Holm, and Jason Barber. We have four public service workers, and they've been here a lot longer than most of us. One victim services girl, and about eight guards. And we also have a dog section here that, a man that lives here with us, he's our dog guy, and he's a regional member, he's kind of all over the place. He goes where he's needed, and we don't see him too much because he seems to be always headed south. Myself, I've been in the RCMP for 34 years, I'll have 35 this August. Actually came to High Level, and it was a southern move for me because I came out of, first I was in Ecallowat, and I was in Whitehorse for two years. So I, and when I was in Ecallowat, I was, first I was in Pang for two years, and then I was in Pond Inlet for about eight months, and then I went to Ecallowat, and I was in the major crime section called MCU. Working there, I was all over the territory. That was up until 2019, and in 2019, I went to Whitehorse to start up a historical case unit, a cold case unit. Worked there for two years, got that off the ground, was also the liaison for the MMIWG and the Yukon, Missing and Murdered Women and Girls. That would, there were 14 indigenous communities there, and I had a strong working relationship with those, with those communities. I had an opportunity for a promotion here, and I jumped on it because it was technically, there's trees here, it's kind of nice to see. This, as I said, there's a southern move for me, so it's nice to be on a system where there's roads, and you can actually get out to Costco or get to a grocery store and actually shop. Coming here was a, it was a nice surprise because I find High Level as a bit of a hidden gem. It's a place where you could be, this could be anywhere in Alberta. Like, it's, it's very agricultural, and I didn't think it was like this at all for being the start north, be this close to the Northwest Territories border. I thought it was going to be a lot of muskeg, and a lot of trees, and a lot of, just more wilderness, I guess. And you come in here, and it's, it's a nice little community. This could be, this could be spruce grove, it could be camels, or anywhere like that. It's got just as many amenities, and it's a pleasant surprise to be here. Last summer, we ran a, what we call an enhanced policing program, and we basically brought in officers to work extra shifts to deal with the downtown vagrancy issues, and a few of the intoxicated persons that seemed to be regular clients. The program was quite successful last, last summer, and the town was pretty happy with our, with, with the result, and they've asked us to do it again. We, we plan to carry that out again this summer, or spring, just depending, excuse me, depending on the weather and when things warm up. But we plan to do that, and hopefully that'll deal with some of the issues downtown, and have some of the people's downtown shopping, and some of the merchants feel a little more secure. Yes, I can do that. Sorry. That last question was in relation to the, making High Level the downtown a safe place for everyone. Sorry about that. The next question we have is, what should people do to protect themselves from animals? Now that spring is here. I think the question's probably referring more to, to the bears. It's, it's, it's something that seems to be more prevalent in the spring and the summer in town here, and we do get the calls about wildlife coming into town, and the conservation officers, we speak with them quite a bit on it. But I mean, just some, just some things that they should be doing, you know, they shouldn't leave the garbage out until they have to on the garbage day. Don't leave anything that may attract an animal. I'm sure, you know, if it's a deer or something like that, that's not really a problem, but nobody wants a bear on their back deck. There's, you know, things you can do, keep your gates shut, keep your vehicles locked, I mean, just for, if there's anything in there that they can smell. And if you're a hunter or a fisher, like, don't leave, don't leave your stuff in the truck. You're going to get animals around there if you do, as well as birds, and they can be messy. Next question is, what about collisions with animals on the highway? Well, we handle that just the same as a regular motor vehicle accident. Nowadays, most everybody has a cell phone, at least somebody has a cell phone, in the vehicle. Call 911. Most of Mackenzie County has cell phone coverage, so call 911, and we'll send a unit, we'll send medical help, we'll send the fire department if required, whatever we need, whether it's a toe out of the ditch or a serious accident. We'll investigate it as, as we would any other. The next question was, what is the RCMP doing to manage some of the problem areas where there is to traffic? Our biggest complaint with traffic is, is the main highways, and a lot of it is truck traffic. A lot of chip trucks and log trucks, and they seem to get outside of town limits, and everybody seems to fly. We also get a lot of traffic coming down from NWT, going to Grand Prairie, and northbound as well. Our, our plan is just more visibility, more enforcement. People don't like tickets, but, but it's a reality, tickets save lives, I mean, they teach people to slow down. Some of the local safety issues we're seeing in the community, we don't have that many, to be honest with you. We have, you know, in the summertime, when it warms up, we get, like, with last summer with the flooding in Chautauqua, we had a lot of people in Chautauqua that were staying at the local downtown hotels. Gave us, there was quite a bit of extra pedestrian traffic around town, and sometimes people don't look where they go. So it's always best to drive defensively, and be aware, and stay off your phone while you're driving. That seems to be the major cause of a lot of our accidents now. People, people are on the phone, and they're not looking on their, at the road where they should be. Next question is, can we talk a bit about property crime and how we can protect your own home and premises from them? I think that's, I mean, people are out now, it seems, at all hours of the night, and there's always somebody walking through our neighborhood. The best advice I can give anyone is lock your vehicle, lock your doors. Theft seems to be a crime of opportunity, and if it's harder to steal from you, they'll go somewhere else. You don't want to see your neighbor, anything happen to your neighbor either, but it's just a common thing to do. People will wander through, and they will, they will go through vehicles when they're going down the street, and, you know, they'll look for change, cell phones, miscellaneous items that you may leave on your car that you just take for granted. Same with your, your doors, not so much in your, in your house, but if your sheds and your, your garages, if you leave things open, people see things, they may not take it that night, but they may come back another. So it's just, just if you secure your items, secure your residence, secure your vehicle. Don't leave things that somebody may, may see as desirable out in plain view. That could be anything from kayaks, or canoes, or sports equipment, or, you know, your kids out playing basketball, and leave the net out on the street. I've seen, I've seen people going down the street with things that you just know aren't, nobody's going to a basketball game at 3:00 in the morning, dragging a basketball net down the street, which is leaving somebody's residence. So if your stuff isn't out there in plain view, and it's, and it's not secured, it's going to go missing at some point, for sure. So if you lock everything up, it should, you should be okay the next day. The nice thing about High Level, it's a pretty small community, we don't have a lot of property crimes, but it's always an issue. It's always an issue. Why is High Level a destination choice for RCMP officers? We seem to get a lot of cadets right out of Depple. We, some of the guys coming from the north, they like High Level because they're obviously Albertans, trying to get back to Alberta. I talked to people that were here, in the area of Fort Vermillion before I came here, and they really enjoyed their time here. It's a nice, respected community. It's a, I've been in some other places where it's, people only go there because they're forced there. They get there, and they don't like it. I find people, initially, you don't, like I said earlier, nobody wants to live three hours outside of Edmonton, but, but when they come, come up here, and they actually work here, they're pleasantly surprised at how nice and peaceful, and it's, it's quiet here, there's parks, there's people walking, there's dogs, you know. You walk down the street, it's like the maritimes, people just say hi to you. At first, you wonder if they're talking to you, because you're not used to that, coming from other places. So it's a nice, it's a nice place to be. I mean, winter's a little long, but not as long as Ecallowat. Can I talk about relationship building with the community and the RCMP? Well, I think, to answer that, I think that's a very important question. It's, it's, it's nice to be able to put a face to the name of an organization, and not necessarily my face, but just the members of the community. And most of the guys up here are pretty good, they all partake in, their kids are in the schools, they participate in sports programs, whether they're coaching hockey or baseball in the summertime. And a lot of our guys are well-integrated in the community, and when they go, it's not only a loss to the community, but it's a loss to us. Because sometimes we don't know who we're going to get next, and, and we're lucky if they're as good as the guys that usually leave. I usually don't like to see people go, because it's, it's a special relationship we, we have here with the community and with the members, and that's why the morale is low here. As I said before, this place is a bit of a hidden gem, and I think if more people knew what this, what it was like here, there'd be a lot of people coming. Is there a benefit to the policing effort to have that relationship with the community? I definitely think there is. The more, the more one-on-one interaction we have with anybody in the, in town or in the community is always a positive thing, and I mean, as I said, it, it gets to be personal with people, and people know somebody by name, and it's not just another government organization that is just here to enforce the law. And I mean, we're, we're trying to get away from this, you know, we're, for sure, we're here to enforce the law, but that's not our only job and our only mandate, and we're here to, to build bridges and, and open lines of communication, and the more we're able to communicate with the community, and the more the community communicates with us, the stronger the relationship is going to get. And I think there's a mutual respect that goes both ways, and that's when you're going to get people, they're going to call in, and they're going to say, oh yeah, well, I know so-and-so who's in the RCMP there, and he, he's a good guy, we'll call him about this accident, or this domestic situation, or, you know, this strange activity that they may, might have seen a few nights before, or something like that, and it's, it's always good for us to, I mean, our, we, we love to talk to people and build bridges as long as we can, and with a lot of people, and usually it's, we have the, we usually have the respect of the community in general, but I mean, the people that are breaking the law, they, they don't seem to want to talk to us. And when they do, sometimes they lie. But that's just part of the game, right? So, but the more people talk to us, the easier it is for us to work out, for sure. Do we have any safety tips for children or students that are, now that spring is here? Well, I don't think whether the spring is here really matters, this is a year-round type of situation. I mean, kids should always be, I think they should, if they have to go anywhere, like, other than the school ground, or, or to a friend's place or anything like that, they should travel together. Nobody should travel alone. They should, you know, it's, it's the same thing that parents say to their kids all the time, don't talk to strangers, things like that. That's, that should be something that's ingrained with the kids. It's something that parents should talk to the kids about almost weekly, because kids can be quite gullible sometimes, and people will offer them things to let, get them to let their guard down, whether it's a ride, or, you know, or candy, or something like that. I mean, and nobody wants, that's the last thing we want to do, is be able to comfort kids that may, may have gone missing. Kids, I mean, they're near and dear to all of us, and we don't want to see anything like that happen, so I mean, we, we have to really exercise diligence when we speak to our kids. One thing I, I used, I've seen a lot in my career is, we'll be sitting down having a coffee somewhere, and parents will correct their kids, and you know, they'll point at us, the police, and they'll say, don't you be bad, I'm going to tell the policeman. I mean, that's the worst thing that somebody could do. They should be telling their kids that if you ever feel that you're in trouble, or you need help, you go right to the policeman, because they're going to protect you, no matter what. But as I said, the most important thing is just to make sure your kids are on guard, and not to talk to strangers. And if they do, or somebody tries to talk to them, tell your parents, tell your teacher, tell the police, tell somebody that you trust what happened. And remember things, like, you know, were they walking, were they driving a vehicle, was it a truck, was it a car? Things like that. Can the RCMP talk about some things that we're seeing more recently? We're, we seem to always be dealing with the same thing, the main issue downtown is the vagrancy issue. This, this community is, it seems to be a bit of a, a drive-through community for people heading north or south. So we don't get problems off of the highway, other than some local issues, and I feel that the local issues that are here are nothing that we can't overcome or address. So mainly vagrancy, things like that, some domestic violence. Usually that's alcohol-induced, and that's going to be more education and community programs. Education, maybe. Can we talk more about items to tackle drug crime in High Level? There are drugs in High Level. We have a two-man crime reduction unit, and their main priority is to work on that problem. A lot of the drugs that, that are here are a result of drugs going north from Edmonton up, up to Yellowknife. There's always some residual stops along the way, you know, the communities as they go north, and there is some small-time drug, I'm not going to say trafficking, because I mean, this isn't the cartel or anything like that, but there are, there is, there is some drug culture in town here, and we're doing, we are combating it. And it's just plain old enforcement, and working on more of our well-known clients that are, that are in that business. Keeping track of them, keeping tabs on them, and enforcing them, we can. How is the RCMP affected by the pandemic? Well, I think, I think they were affected the same as a lot of the other people in, with a lot of the other people in the community, and Canadians in general, I mean, I mean, there were travel restrictions, there were restrictions with, with masks and vaccines, and there's a strong anti-vaccine, I'm not going to say establishment, because there's a lot of the population that don't believe in that, and, and of course, we kind of get hobbled into the middle, I mean, whether we believe in it or not, we're here to enforce the law and, and health mandates, and what I think people forget to realize is, you know, they don't want to, they're putting their, their freedom of choice in front of the health of people that may contract the disease or get sick and possibly die, so I think these, these conditions that were imposed and stuff like that were for the betterment of everybody in general. And sometimes, you know, people don't agree with that, they call us to enforce some of these conditions. And we, we didn't have too many issues here, we had a couple of, you know, protests and things like that, and hey, this is a free country, you want to protest, you go ahead and protest, as long as you're not breaking the law or obstructing anyone else. Now, with, with everything that went on in Coots down, down at the borders, down south, we, we had to send people down there for that, from all over the place, all over the province, with issues in Ottawa, I mean, they drew on, they drew on resources from us, from all over the country. I mean, we were lucky that these, these situations didn't last very long, so we could put up the short-term, we could, we could handle it for the time being, but if, if it were to be prolonged, it would be hard on our resources, for sure. Thankfully, some of the restrictions are relaxed, and hopefully, hopefully, knock on wood, things will kind of get back to normal. How did these efforts affect our policing dealing with crime? They didn't really affect the way we deal with crime, or the way we regularly do business. I mean, and we, you know, we wear masks, we take precautions, we sanitize. It's still, it's still something that, you know, crime is still out there, and it's something we still have to deal with, and we're going to deal with it legally and safely, and in a way that's safe for everyone, whether we're wearing gloves, or masks, or hand sanitizer, things like that, that, you know. We wipe everything down every day, we wipe the cells down, we wipe the vehicles down, and that's not only to protect us, it's to protect people that may wind up in the backseat. I have a question from Ruth. Ask if there are any plans for a community liaison officer. Within the community or not? Not this time, I, I think we're all approachable. We have officers that are assigned to schools. When we have the fair in the summer, we have extra officers on working, and we're, we're approachable. If somebody has a question, come and talk to us. You can call us, you can stop us at the post office, you can come into the front desk. We're a part of the community too, we live here, and we want to belong. Next place to be, and people don't like to be scared of us, we're not, we're not here to, you know, we're not, we're not the Gestapo, as some people refer us to. Ruth, I'll, okay. Ruth is also asking about educational safety sessions in, in the school bike program, helmet safety, and things like that. helmet safety and things like that. That's something that the school, the officers inside of the schools can talk to the kids about. I'm not sure if we have a particular program, but that's something we can definitely put on board and put in the program and talk about. Bicycle rotis, things like that, they're all good. I mean, we like, we like to talk to the kids. It builds, it builds relationships with us for kids in the future. They'll talk to us when they're six years old, you know, they might talk to us when they're 16. So. Things like baby car seat installations, overall safety in the vehicle. That's something, I mean, if we, if we're on the road and we see a vehicle and there's kids all over the car and they're climbing everywhere, it's not like it was in the 60s, like when we were kids. We're going to pull the car over and we're going to, we're going to get, make sure that your kids are secure. This is something that parents should be doing anyway. When you buy a vehicle, you buy a vehicle from a dealer, I mean, they should be asking you, you know, do you have kids? And they should, all of the vehicles, all the vehicles have, even the old vehicles, they have restraint points for car seats built into the vehicles and there's usually instructions on the backs of the cars, on the back of the car seats anyway, on how to hook these things up. This is something parents should be doing. I mean, unfortunately, not everybody's responsible or not everybody thinks about it. It's the same as seatbelt enforcement for adults. I mean, you should be putting on your seatbelt, just for the simple fact of turn off the buzzer. That's annoying enough. And I mean, that, that should be getting people to buckle up. And I mean, they should be taking twice the precautions with their own children. But if we see somebody on the road and their kids are climbing all over the place like they're at the park there, we're going to definitely pull the vehicle over and have chat. How about education efforts regarding children and crosswalk safety? That's something we can bring up at the schools for sure. I mean, I think that's something that parents relate to their kids anyway, but we don't have an issue talking about it for sure. I mean, we all know kids playing in the park and stuff like that. If somebody hits the ball or the ball bowls out over the street, sometimes kids, kids run out. But I mean, we have, in all school zones, the speed limit is 30 kilometers in town and when the school is on, you should be going under 30 kilometers. You should be aware. Anybody who is driving through those areas or even any residential areas, they should be driving defensively anyway. And eyes on the road, eyes on the side of the road where, where there's areas where there's parks where kids may run out because sometimes kids don't pay attention. I mean, they're excited playing games and stuff like that, chasing balls. And sometimes they don't look. So, I mean, it's, it's, the kids are definitely responsible for where they are, but so are the drivers. They have to be cognizant of the fact that these things may happen around playgrounds and parks and things like that, school yards. Even parking lots and hockey arenas and things like that too. So I mean, there's kids always running around. Most of the people that are in those places usually have kids themselves and they're usually cognizant of the fact that there are kids around. So. Does the R C N P take part in programs for students and internet safety? That's something we can improve on. I'm not sure how much of that we actually talk about. I mean, we usually get involved with internet safety after something happens and a parent finds out something that their child's been doing or somebody that they've been talking to that they feel is inappropriate. And we usually find that out after the fact. I know we do have programs for that. I am not currently aware if we have anything like that going on in High Level. Not to say that it doesn't happen, but that's something we could probably improve on. Does High Level have an issue with firearm crimes? Not, I don't believe we have an issue with firearm crimes per se. I mean, it's an issue of concern anytime we have a domestic situation. When I was up north, it was always a concern because everybody hunted and everybody fished and there were always firearms close by. I find in the communities, the southern communities, they're more residential. It's a little more, I'm not going to say civil, but it's a little, there's a little, there's less firearms and weapons and things like that that are usually available. I mean, it's something we're always cognizant of and we're aware of, but in High Level here, no, we're not really. I mean, anytime we go into a situation where we don't know who we're dealing with or what we're dealing with, we're cognizant of that anyway, whether it be firearms or edged weapons or just items of opportunity that could be used to hurt somebody else, we're always going to train to have a look around when we go into a, into a house or into a domestic situation. We kind of do a quick scan to find out if there is any potential danger there for anything. And we never, you know, I'm not saying we never, but we shouldn't let anybody go anywhere and be out of sight, so to speak. That could be a potential threat. But as far as High Level, no. I mean, it's something, we get a domestic situation where we're cognizant of what may be a problem, but usually firearms aren't usually one of them. Now, if we're going up to a camp, that's a domestic situation. You know, your level of awareness is definitely raised for just the potential that those type of things may be there. They usually are there. Okay. The next question we have is, flames are Oilers and why is the right answer to flames? Well, actually, I'm going to say the Leafs, because I'm for the Maritimes and they were winning when I left tonight. I don't know if they are now. When I don't watch them, they always do well. When I watch them, they seem to lose a lot. But I like the Oilers too. If anybody, if we don't have any other questions tonight, we can wrap up and say goodnight for the evening. That doesn't mean we're not open for questions or concerns or anything that anybody has. You know, they can always come by the detachment anytime during business hours. We're available and there's usually somebody always there. And if somebody isn't there, there's somebody on call. But if somebody has a question about anything or they can bring it up with any one of the officers on the street or that they see anywhere, the post office, the grocery store, whether they're working or not, it's a general question. They'll be glad to help. They'll be glad to answer them. Or come in, like I said before, come to the front desk or post them on the website and we can deal with them at the next town hall. Everybody have a pleasant evening.